23 meeting of the Coldwater City Council to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Richman is absent. Councilmember Mackin?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Conack?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Here.
Councilmember Fetsco?
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Howells?
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. We'd like for a motion to excuse Councilperson Richman, please.
Motion to excuse.
Travis?
Of course.
Thanks Chad. We have motion, we have support to excuse Emily. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Emily is excused. We have a spot on our agenda now for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, seeing one. Gotta be quick here.
Hello, everyone. I am Haley Richards and I'm the Economic Development Intern this summer. I am a senior at Chine University where I study English and Communications with a concentration in Health Administration. I've taken classes like Business Communication, Writing for the Media, but also American Literature and Shakespeare. This summer, I will be working on such things such as the Sculpture Patronicity Campaign with the Public Spaces and Community Places Guide. Also, working on a guide for hosting public space events, a training plan for boards and commissions, and a public outreach for the branding campaign, and the USDA Housing Preservation Grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Good luck. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go under our consent agenda. I'm going to ask that number one, the city council minutes of May 8th be removed. So what we would have would be historic district commission minutes of December 14th. Our quarterly MRR statement and the police department activity report for the first quarter. Would anyone else like any of those three items removed? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve those items.
Someone's support.
Randall, Mike? We have motion and we have support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. In our minutes, I just believe we'd want to like to make a correction on the sale of the property to Schmidt Home. I think Councilman Johnson and Beckwith's yes votes were omitted from the minutes as being listed. Since it was a property sale, I think we just want to go back and do it right. So we would ask that the minutes be approved with the amendment of Councilperson Johnson and Beckwith's yes vote on the Schmidt Home property transfer.
Motion to approve amendment.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Michael. I think, Mike, John. You both, you both sound the same over there. We have motion, we have a support to approve the amended minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Minutes are approved. Now we have a memo from Keith. We have a public hearing regarding the 2023-24 budget. I guess we'll open the public hearing and have a report from Keith and take public comment and then close the public meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. Left to my own devices this evening, so with other staff having other commitments. This is at the last meeting. You scheduled a public hearing at which to hear comment on the proposed fiscal year 2324 city budget. The budget, there is a letter in your packet that addresses some of the specifics relative to it. At this point, we're projecting a budgeted deficit of $512,000. Of that though, $425,000 of that is for the second half of the purchase of the new fire truck. So it really has about a $90,000 operational budget deficit, which is relatively small from the scale of our budget. And it is kind of within the margin of error, if you will, that we budget on annually. So we would consider that essentially a break even budget. The budget itself is approximately $12 million. That's the nature of our business on an annual basis, both with revenues and expenditures. The expenditures include about a million dollars worth of capital equipment spending. There again, over 400,000 of that is just in the fire truck. A couple other capital purchases that are proposed that are within that are three different DMS trucks of various sizes, including a big five yard plow and dump truck. And two police cars. So that's the majority of our equipment. We're looking at the resurfacing of the tennis courts. And actually, that's in this current years. If they get done by the end of June, they'll be in this current fiscal year. Really, that's all I had to point out. You have the specifics. The road mileage doesn't change. All the other mileage rates remain the same. You have a breakdown of the revenue and expenses for each account. And with that, there's no action to take place. This is just an opportunity in which to take public comment.
Good explanation. Is there any public would like to comment on the fiscal year 2324 budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And since there's no action, we'll move on to a presentation by our OJT student in the IT department, Brian Torres Alcántara. You don't look like Brian.
Hello.
From behind the scenes.
Oh, there he is.
So this past school year, we had the opportunity to host another Branch Area Career Center student for our OJT program. And Brian Torres Alcántara is here to share with you his experiences here at the City of Coldwater and Board of Public Utility. Brian?
Evening, councilmembers. Like she said, my name is Brian Torres Alcántara, and I'm actually here from Coldwater, at Coldwater High School. Right, so I'm about to graduate in about a week or so. I'm the chap, a little bit about myself as well. I'm the chapter president of the Business Professionals of America chapter here at the Career Center. And I was also the state parliamentarian for the Michigan Association level of Business Professionals of America. I'm in both the high school marching band and the symphonic band. I just want to say that I absolutely love this opportunity that was given to me by the CBU. And so it, so overall this year, it's been testing my skills and I wanted to say that it improved my priorities, my prioritization of what comes next, of what, like what I, what tasks I have to do, like who I need to reach out to, who I need to talk to, what I need to research it. And especially with some of the stuff that I, that I've done throughout this year, I've, there was some instances where I did have to work a little bit under pressure to try to get, get something done in a, in a quick manner of time. My customer service skills throughout the year, talking with all of the, my fellow CBU coworkers, has helped me improve my communication skills. Because before this year, I was, I was more introverted per se. And so I wasn't the kind of person to like constantly talk or like ask people about an issue or whatnot. And then my troubleshooting technique as well before, before this school year wasn't exactly the best. It was just see what's going on and try a few different things and then try to look up what was going on. But now, now that I've learned, what I've learned here, it, it helps, essentially helped me learn how to troubleshoot more effectively. And especially now with some of the projects that I've done, I've also been more willing to ask for help, whereas, you know, beforehand, again, not really my style. And so, yeah, so some of the projects I've done, they've just helped me to expect what, what happens in the workplace, what, what are the major changes? And essentially allowed me to take, essentially take the wheel of whatever I was doing. And it especially, that was one of the main parts, especially since I had to navigate several obstacles throughout this year. And so one of these was the Windows feature updates, which was keeping all of our computers up to date, making sure they're running the latest Windows version. And there are several issues that were present in our CASE system management appliance system that would be really finicky when it would come to trying to push those updates through CASE automatically. And then there was also some issues with storage, because now, a lot of people have a lot of different files, documents, whatnot, on their computers. And the Windows feature updates require about eight gigabytes of storage. So I would have to try to connect, talk with them and see what, what could be deleted, what could be maybe pushed online, what, so that those Windows features could run. And then updating and removing, the second project was removing our, updating our Blue Beam software. Blue Beam is our PDF your software that we use here at, here at City of Coldwater. And essentially, there's, a lot of our computers have older versions of them that, that need to be updated. And so again, we, I tried to using the CASE system management appliance system that we have. And then using the, and then, sorry. And there was also issues trying to update policies within our Windows domain to allow script, for those CASE scripts to run. CASE scripts are just a series of, scripts are just a series of commands that run on a computer, so they work, so they do A, task A, B, and C. Yeah, I had, there was updating system policies throughout our entire domain, and essentially meeting as well, meeting with, with Quest CASE to help resolve some of the issues in the system. Lastly, what are, well, what I've been doing today and several, at several of these public meetings was running our audio visual system throughout these meetings, making sure that it's streaming on YouTube just fine, that everyone can hear what we're saying. So that there's, you know, public documentation of these meetings. And there were some slight microphone issues. I'm not sure if any of you guys remember, about a month or two ago, there was some high pitched squealing with those, with these microphones. I had to meet with, with Simple Homes, our, our AV company that we work with, to resolve those issues. And luckily now, they're not, not squealing anymore, so. So overall, I just, working here has helped me become more involved and especially showed me growth in both confidence, troubleshooting, worth, worth, work ethic, and by, and experience that I'll, you know, I'll need going throughout my career. And essentially, it helped increase my confidence of my decision and career choice. I'll be attending Western Michigan University, studying cybersecurity. And it just opened up a lot of new and exciting, exciting opportunities. I want to thank, thank those who've invested in me, Patrick Poole, Sheila Puffenberger, Scott Mishke, Josh Smith, and Craig Figaro. And I want to thank you all for your time and being here. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Good presentation. Thank you. Now get back to the cameras. Number six, bills and accounts are asking us to approve payment of $168, $112. What's your pleasure?
We'll pay the bills.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Travis? We have motion and support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bills are paid. City manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. Primarily wanted to go over what our decision-making process is for selecting street paving. I made that, gave that report in the city manager's report for purposes of public distribution. How we go about evaluating through a rating system of our city streets on an annual basis. Once they're rated, we look at what streets rated the poorest and to what extent we could address those. One of the, or a couple of the primary considerations when we look at paving streets is whether or not they also need utility infrastructure improvements. And so if so, how does that fit into the BPU's budget? And if we can coordinate that, we will, we will wait to do those particular streets until the funding is available through the BPU for water and sewer improvements. We're also, at this point, we're kind of in a second of three-year window whereby the BPU is replacing lead water services. And so we don't want to do any streets that are going to be incurring those numerous spot repairs for those lead water service replacements. And so an example of that is Sherman Street that was just completed with lead replacements, and it tends to create a lot of patches on the street. And so we're going to wait to do, and there's quite a few lead water services within the city, particularly in the older areas. So we're going to wait to do those streets until those lead water service lines have been replaced. So given that, and the streets that are proposed for this coming year, which we've gone over before, I think for this summer, include Butter's Avenue, West Pearl, the really bad section between US 12 and, and J Street. South Sprague to complete a three-phase process of repairing South Sprague Street. Salt River Drive, the second year of, of that work, and the portions of the North Shore and Arrowhead subdivisions. In addition to Willow Lane as part of the US 12 MDOT project. So just wanted to make, we got a social media post out about it last week. We put it in the city manager's report. And just kind of wanted to address how we go about evaluating and deciding which streets get paved on an annual basis. Secondly, as we were talking at the staff meeting this morning, and we were comparing notes, we've experienced a number of different vandalism. Instances within the past couple of weeks, first of which was at Waterworks Park and the restrooms there. I think I've noted previously with the fire pit, we're making repairs to that. The graffiti that was experienced on a Rotary Park. And so we just want to encourage people that if they see something, to report it. That they can do so by calling 911 and an officer will respond. Or if you just see damage that's, that's been made to a city property, you can call the city's, the city's general line to report any damage to our facilities, whether it's a park, restroom, playground equipment. We try to, try to inspect those on a weekly basis, but may not always notice it. And then lastly, a couple of community events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. First of which is the Memorial Day ceremonies, very similar schedule to prior years, this coming Monday, May 29th. With the downtown ceremony beginning at 8:30 on Monday morning at Four Corners Park. And then the Oak Grove Cemetery ceremony taking place at 10:30. In conjunction with Memorial Day, the city and BPU offices will be closed next Monday. And then lastly, Strawberry Fest, we're still, I believe, truly reported this morning that we're up to about 135 vendors for that. So we're nearing the number that we had last year, hope to exceed that with a couple of weeks left. But vendors, we are still taking registrations and vendors can register online or with the city's recreation department. That's scheduled for Saturday, June 17th. And that's from, that's from nine to three on that afternoon, that morning and afternoon. So with that, that's all I had for you this evening. Any questions?
Questions for Keith? I don't know if you know off the top of your head, Apple Fest was huge last year. How many, do you, you know about how many vendors we had there?
I believe that was pushing 175.
Okay.
Closing in on 200, so.
That's still big for Strawberry Fest.
And of those 135 that have already registered, she's made a note previously about how some of those are multiple spots. So they maybe have rented two or three stalls.
I know last fall at Apple Fest, I can't remember if we mentioned it, but Chad and I were down there talking to a lot of the vendors and the big vendors. And one of the complaints that some of them had was that the Apple vendors themselves were like pushed back. They weren't like up in the front visible. Type of things. I don't know if it was a size issue, but all the, all the big Apple, you know, the producers, that was kind of their same. They loved it. It was great. They just said it would be better if we're closer up front.
Okay. We did do a survey after Apple Fest last year because of the change in location and kind of rearrangement of, of the setup. This year, the Strawberry Fest will extend on the south side of US 12 and then will incorporate again the Four Corners Park area. So there'll be some visibility and exposure from the main intersections for the event. And it'll work its way down US 12, down South Monroe Street and down Hanchet into Tibbetts Plaza.
Questions for Keith? Vandalism, are we, are we doing all we can with, with the technology? We've got the city wired now with fiber. Are we looking at, do we need to look at, should we look at more cameras? I know it's not that simple, but like the Four Corners Park, and obviously you've caught people at, I mean.
Right. There are some, there are cameras that want, even, even as good as technology is, sometimes it's difficult to physically identify the person. So you can catch, and we had a situation last year where we were able to catch an event on South Monroe Street with that camera there, but there again, you couldn't.
Hey Mayor, the police department's hiring and they're putting two of the cameras.
And it's just cost, right? How many are you going to put up and how, it's, it's data storage, it's cost, it's being selected where you place them. They are planned for, to be able to, to monitor the restrooms when they're completed, so they're going to add some there. So they, they do exist around town, but they're not everywhere.
Sometimes knowing those cameras deters people too. Just knowing that they're there keeps some people away. So even though you might not identify somebody, that camera's presence may keep somebody from doing something. There's a camera downtown for Four Corners. We were just talking about the one on top of the library, right?
Correct. Right now, yep. So it's very good for identifying who's at fault for accidents.
Right.
But it isn't, is, doesn't get as.
Close up.
Yep, for, for individuals.
Okay. Any other questions for Keith? We'd love a motion to approve the city manager report then.
Don't move.
Thanks Chad. Thanks Jim. We have motion, we have support to approve the city manager report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? City manager report approved. Number eight is a letter from Erica Donahue, Children's Services Coordinator for the Branch District Library regarding a proposed story walk installation at Heritage Park.
Yes, thank you so much, councilmembers, for having us. Again, I'm Erica Donahue and this is Kimberly Felmer, our Assistant Director at Branch District Library. We are looking to put in a permanent story walk down at Heritage Park to help increase some early literature exposure, just an interactive story opportunity for families and students all across Coldwater and Branch County. These stories would be children's literature from popular titles like The Very Hungry Caterpillar to some more popular titles that encourage the exposure of different types of poetry and just different literature styles that maybe kiddos would not be exposed to unless they either came to the library or were at school. It's a unique way to just get families involved with the library without necessarily being in our four walls. We are looking at having 18 signs put in at Heritage Park. We do have a couple of different locations. We would love for you to take a peek at and decide where maybe you feel a beneficial spot would be. But this would just allow for, we think, a really unique opportunity to take the library outside of its four walls and really get the families interacted with the story. Essentially, how this works is we would start with page one, and it slowly progresses across the 18 signs. And as they walk, they get the story, so they're enjoying the fresh air and a little bit of exercise all at the same time.
Sean, I believe we have some slides for them to.
Yes.
I know you covered quite a bit of it, but you can just tell it to flip along.
Essentially, the pictures you're seeing up here is what it could look like. Each sign would be placed about five to eight foot apart. So we would look at, be looking at between 90 to about 140 feet of distance. Ideally, we would like it on a path that is easy accessible for individuals with walkers, strollers, wagons, anything that might be aid for them. The beautiful part, as you can see in the last image, is this is a year-round story. So the library would go out about four times a year for start, change these out, refresh them, tie them into holidays, include literatures that are both, which I believe if I, oh, here's our locations if you want to take a peek. Our top location would probably be number one, just because we believe that to be the nice traffic flow for individuals from parking to the walk and then to continue the path as they move. However, the other two locations, we feel could be ideal as well. And so just the community impact, again, these stories would be stories that are popular titles, but they're also going to be multilingual. We plan to have stories that are both in English and Spanish, English and Arabic, English and French, because those are the, the communities and languages that are represented in our community. And we want to make sure that people can enjoy this, and it's completely free. So this is not going to cost them anything to enjoy a story.
Erica, let me ask you, is it one page on each plaque?
It's between one and two pages, depending on how the book is laid out. So it takes about 18 signs because of just the length of most children's stories. There will be times that maybe there are pages that aren't being taken up in the, the display. And so we can advertise local community events, we can advertise sponsors or anything, library events coming up as well. We definitely want to utilize those signs, even if we aren't necessarily filling every single time we have a story up with all of those pages.
These and other parks in the nation or in the state, have these been done before?
Yes, these became very popular during COVID as libraries were becoming very unique in how we got books out to people. There's national parks who utilize this service to advertise their happenings, and they'll do interactive stories and interactive activities for their, for children and their families as they go. So this is not just a very, I mean, it's relatively new, but it's not so new that it's not popular.
How many stories a year would you be swapping out? I mean, do you have some kind of an idea?
Yeah, so right now we're looking at about four stories a year. But that we would love to increase as time goes on and as popularity grows. You know, it's one of those things that I myself plan to maintain. And if this is something we hear lots of great responses about and families are actively seeking this out and they want newer stories, we can absolutely change that to a monthly, six-week basis if need be.
Locations you showed are at Heritage Park. Is there something we can do at the library outside on the Four Corners Walkway?
Yeah. So previously, we have had temporary story walks at the Coldwater Branch, and they have been great. We are very thankful that we were able to do that. Of course, they were temporary, so the yard signs were flapping over on a regular basis. With the, the spacing of a permanent story walk, having more of a defined location that would give people the opportunity to start and stop, like one of those paths that were shown in the last image, would be ideal. One of the main reasons the library started exploring this concept was we were approached by a local service club, the Quanis Club of Coldwater, to potentially have them sponsor this project. And we were talking locations, the Quanis has the hill at Heritage Park. And so it was kind of this ever-evolving conversation, how could we incorporate Quanis Hill and Heritage Park? And then as we've kind of progressed and talked with the city, we've, we got a couple of different alternative locations. But it really does seem that Heritage Park, that has the foot traffic, that has that Quanis tie-in already, made a good logical sense for spacing and kind of building that excitement.
Could you do both?
It is an expensive project, and as of this morning, Quanis has fully sponsored one story walk in the community. So it would have to be something where you'd have to reach additional grants or sponsors or anything like that.
Staff are supportive of putting these permanent fixtures along the trail?
Yeah, we met with the staff of the library. You might want to address maintenance or the potential for vandalism or.
Yeah, one of the pieces that were brought up when we met with the city was the, some of the locations, initially that we proposed weren't as lighted as we were aware of. So we kind of tweaked some to more commonly used lighted paths. We have also pursued an additional grant at the library to cover the cost of replacement if there unfortunately was vandalism. The actual tips part of the sign is just like an acrylic sheet. So we could see that being something that might need to be replaced. And we do plan to have that kind of money set aside at the library to make those replacements. I would like to hope that no one would take out a story walk, but we just don't know, unfortunately. So I'm really positive about the fact that we've altered the locations a little bit to maybe be more in safer areas for these signs. But we do have some money set aside in case there's unfortunate vandalism.
Maybe we could have our legal counsel put together a program of ramifications of vandalism. And they could read the different misdemeanors and how much time you'd have to serve.
Should have got the gavel out. I knew what was coming.
If I may, you joke about that, but I visited the Great Smoky Mountain National Park over spring break, and they do have signs set up like this, like Don't Be Bob, and expressing, explaining that Bob is somebody who had left graffiti on one of their, one of their buildings, one of their historic buildings. So they do have, have the, to try to discourage that kind of graffiti or vandalism.
There'd be 18 of these on a cement base permanently mounted?
Correct. They're installed much like a mailbox post.
My guess, if, my only concern is if in five years, library is no longer maintaining them, well, we have to go in and, you know, if it's not as exciting in five years from now as it is right now, it's something we're going to have to deal with.
Pulling out 18 posts isn't that, we'd dig more than 18 holes a year.
We'd put our minutes on there, that would be exciting. And we don't call it Quanis Hill, we call it Mount Canox, so just so you know. What's your pleasure, folks? Staff are recommending this, I assume?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a positive. And we talked to them about alternative locations as council member Mackin had addressed and suggesting where else in the community it could be. But for the reasons that they identified for, for potential viewership and traffic and visibility and parking, that those are all why, and, and the connection to Quanis, why they wanted to be there.
Move to adopt Resolution 23-38. Support. Thank you, John. Thank you, Michael. Any final comments or questions? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Number nine is a memo from our, Paul, our utility director regarding a proposed lease to American Municipal Power. Paul?
No presentations. You're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Back in April 10th, at your April 10th meeting, you went ahead and approved, or tentatively approved, the lease agreement with American Municipal Power Agency to lease property next to the Bennett Street substation for the installation of, from diesel generation. One, to help us with capacity costs, the other is to provide the ability to black-start or keep power flowing if we lose all three of our ITC transmission lines coming on, which we hope will never, ever happen. But if it does, we'll at least have the ability to power some of the emergency management locations in the downtown area. So with that, the 30 days has elapsed, and we're here to seek final approval to lease that parcel on Bennett Street and, and ask for your approval of Resolution 23-27 and Agreement A23-09 to go ahead and sign the lease agreements with AMP and the city for this parcel.
Questions for Paul? I can concur, this is a roll call vote. Paul?
Move to approve Resolution 23-27 and Agreement A23-09.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. We have motion and support. Whenever the clerk's ready.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Canack?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Petzko?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes. Motion carried. Number 10 is a memo from Paul regarding public electric vehicle charging rate request. Paul?
Well, thank you for the previous one, and thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. At the last meeting on May 8th, we went ahead and introduced Ordinance 859 to go ahead and create a new rate, the public electric vehicle charging rate. Currently, we have two charging stations which allow to charge up to four vehicles that are free of use for the public. The grant and all that has expired, and now what we're doing is we're asking for permission to go ahead and create this rate to go ahead and be able to recoup some of our costs that we've done from an infrastructure perspective as well as a usage perspective. At the last meeting, it was asked a little bit as far as what the actual rates were for charging vehicles. So a Tesla takes roughly one hour to charge for 30 miles. So if you want to go 30 miles, it's going to take you about an hour to charge that vehicle. If you're lucky enough to own one of the Ford Mach-Es, it will take you two hours to charge enough to go those same 30 miles. And roughly on a Tesla, it's about 7.3 kilowatt-hours that you'll use in that one hour period. And on the Mach-E, about 13.6 kilowatt-hours per, per charge for that time. So when we looked at this, the $2 for every hour for the first four hours and $4 every hour is within reason to recoup our cost to, of the energy as well as the cost of the capital improvements that we've made in those locations. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but I'd go ahead and offer to approve Ordinance Number 859 for the public electric vehicle charging rate, which will go into effect July 1st.
These are tied into ChargePoint?
Yes.
So ChargePoint gets a part of that $2, they must.
Exactly, yeah. So you'll have a ChargePoint app, you get on the app, plug in where you're at, and then they'll go ahead and charge you, and then they'll send us on a monthly basis what, what the revenue is for that.
They collect the money and they kick back to you, whatever.
Yeah, they'll take their percentage like the government and then give you the rest.
All right.
All right. And we're at least covering the cost of our energy plus?
Yes.
The maintenance?
Yes.
And did we pay for those originally or were those government grant?
Originally, the, the first one that was put on, on West Chicago was a grant that has been replaced. And then, so we've actually purchased that one as well as the newest one there on Four Corners.
And how much does each unit cost?
I want to say they're around $3,000 to $4,000 apiece.
Installed or?
No, that's just for the charger itself. So installed costs, you're probably looking at another $2,000, $3,000 with transformers and wire, everything else that needs to be with that.
Any questions for Paul? He's asking us to consider adoption of Ordinance 859.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 859.
Thank you, Chad. Sorry, who had support? Travis?
Jim.
Jimmy? Okay, we have motion, we have support. Any final questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Number 11 is a memo from Keith regarding the proposed design contract for Rotary Park, the West Side. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. So this would be the next step in the effort to relocate and build a new boat launch and kayak accessible, ADA accessible kayak and canoe launch, and the development of rental boat slips, parking and fishing access points for Rotary Park, which would relocate those to the west side of the channel. And you had discussed this at the budget workshop that was held on April 24th. And then there was subsequently a committee meeting made up of recreation board members, council representation, staff, and the consultants to look over the plans as they've currently been designed and to get affirmation that that was what we wanted to move forward with. And so with that, we then solicited a proposal from Pam Blau, who's been our designer on this project. And she has presented the proposal in the amount of not to exceed $35,000 to then complete the bid documents, the construction drawings, and bid manual, and apply for the relevant eagle permits that would be necessary to work along the channel and lake. And so to proceed with moving this project along, if it's, so your decision, we would ask your consideration for approval of Resolution 23-37 and Agreement Number 23-11 to enter into an agreement for design services for the design of the West Side Rotary Park boat launch.
Question? Big project?
I would add that, as we discussed, this would be budgeted from the funds that we receive from the marijuana sales tax revenue. So that fund that's been established in escrow separately towards this project, we would utilize the design costs as well as the construction costs from those sources.
What's your pleasure? Motion to approve. Thank you, Scott. Or? Thank you, John. Any other questions for Keith or staff? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number 12 is a letter from Keith Baker regarding waste contract extension. Keith?
So we had this discussion about this time last year as well. In negotiations with our current provider and soliciting proposal from another provider, evaluating the, the costs that are being incurred by our neighboring communities, you have before you a proposed contract extension. Think of it in two ways, one, for a one-year increase, or if you were so inclined, they proposed 5% increases for a second and third year if you were to extend it to a three-year contract. We've had really good experience in service with Republic Services of West Michigan. We have relatively few complaints or concerns that have been brought to our attention for their services. They currently provide both weekly refuse removal, biweekly recycling, and then weekly large item pickup. And you see there in the comparisons as to other communities, some of which either offer recycling or not, and most of which have no provision for large item pickup other than you can pay the provider separately. And every case that I've found, it's a minimum of $15 and upwards of 20 or 25 if you, as a customer, wanted them to pick up a, a single large item, like an appliance or a piece of furniture or what have you. So I think at $1.30 per month, if a customer, if one of our current residents and customers were to put one item out even during the course of a year, they would have gotten their money's worth for that particular service. So really what I'm seeking is consideration of Resolution 23-39. It would extend the current contract to either one or three years, depending on your decision. And it would extend the contract to Republic Waste Services in Agreement, Draft Agreement Number 23-10. And offer it up for any questions you may have.
Do you know if, if they're separating the recyclables? I just have seen a lot where they're saying it's difficult anymore with recycling. So a lot of it is actually, you know, it's picked up in a separate toter and hauled in a separate truck. A lot of places are no longer separating, they're just processing. A lot of places are no longer separating, they're just processing it like regular trash.
They've reassured me, their customer service representative for the community has been here before and made presentations. So they've reassured us that that is the case.
They do actually?
That they're charging us a, a premium to collect it that way and that, that, and that it is being maintained separately and not just being put back into the waste stream.
Okay.
One of the things that was brought up to me by a citizen was bringing back our one-day pickup. It kind of made sense the way he explained it was we got rid of a lot of stuff before we actually had it picked up because people would come and recycle it. But that was just another suggestion. I know.
That's, I mean, other communities, you, you see in examples, I know other communities, Union City, Quincy, do that. You know, it depends what, what type of, there's usually a cost for that separately like we do household hazardous waste, but then you have, you know, what does a community look like for those days or weeks that, that takes place? So it's very much, I mean, each one of these is a service that you can choose to or not to provide as well. Whether you, whether you provide recycling, whether you provide large item pickup. I think as it's currently structured, we, we have a very good service. We provide all three. But it is very much à la carte. You could, you could choose just to, to collect garbage at some point as well.
What's the alternative proposal? What's the nineteen ninety-nine?
So that was one of the other providers that, that I solicited from that, that does operate in the area and their, their quote was nineteen ninety-nine.
I don't know what you guys think, but I would think a three-year contract would be nice and five percent's fairly reasonable at these times.
It's, it'd be three-year contract, five percent for years two and three?
Correct. So it's starting at the seventeen thirty-five and then five percent for each one after that.
And then these other rates on here, I'm assuming, maybe you didn't ask that when you contacted them, but those are probably last year's rates that aren't, so I'm sure everybody else's is going up.
Right. They, they all have escalators and talking with Quincy, Brunson, Union City, they're all, they're all the rates in which they're current, for the current year in which they're being charged.
About, about.
But they all have different start and end points within their contracts. They all have different percentage increases for their escalators.
I'd prefer to do three years too. I've had good service, I've been happy with them. I like that large item pickup. I think it's appreciated in the community. I think we should just, so I didn't forget it, do the three years and not worry about it for three years.
I agree.
I think.
I also agree.
Try a motion and see what happens.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-three thirty-nine and approve agreement A twenty-three dash.
A three-year contract?
Spark.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, enter a three-year contract with Republic. The price is shown and a five percent increase for year two and three. Everybody clear on that? That's the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number thirteen, a letter from Keith regarding the appointment of coordinator and contact person for Title VI non-discrimination, LEP and ADA plans.
I would say this wouldn't be utilized very often, but we just had one recently. We probably had two within six-year period. But with the, with the transition of Dean Walrach from one position to another with the BPU, we need to identify a new person. We've assigned that to Jake Van Boxel. And so we would ask your approval of the resolution to appoint him as our Title VII representative and ADA grievance procedure administrator.
Title VII or Title VI?
Title VI, oh, six, sorry, yes.
Love appointing people around here, so who wants to do it?
Move to approve.
Thank you Randall.
Support.
Thank you Michael. We have support and a motion to support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Jake is stuck. We're down to very limited public. I don't think Paul wants any public comments.
So this is the language to go into a special sessions.
No complaints? Oh, okay, I got you. If Paul doesn't want to say anything, we have no public comment. Is there any unfinished business at council level? Any new business at our level? We do have a request to go into closed session for the strategy and negotiation for our collective bargaining agreement. So that's the purpose of us going into closed session. We need a motion to do that. A roll call vote.
Move to go into a closed session.
Yeah?
Gone.
Okay, gone. We have motion and support to go into a closed session. Clerk's ready, please take the vote.
Council member Beckwith?
Yes.
Council member Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Council member Houts?
Yes.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Canack?
Yes.
Council member Mackin?
Yes.
Council member Pettsel?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Flavor?
Even all back.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody's here. Hall of Fame, please say aye.
Aye.
Did you...
I supplant. Okay, I'm sorry. Is there any other new business at this time? In none or adjourned? Okay.